Oh, I like I like this.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're doing the dirty ace. Let's get started.
Uh oh.
There we go. Now you know what we mean with the thirty eight razor call.
I would. This is like either the bottom of the raise or the top of the call in my mind.
Kind of agree. Yeah.
With clubs raises better, right?
Ah, you know, it's a good question, Danny. I don't know. Probably because you're unblocking the continues that aren't an ace. Doesn't really matter. Yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Why is it not anyway?
Sudi combos. Louis, look at the board. Look at it.
Ah, that's right.
It does do it a little less with spade, just a little bit.
So check.
Check if we check before.
Oh, he's checking.
Man, okay, so the nine completes. I don't. Yeah, he checked the turn, so I don't think we play like super trappy. I just um.
Uh, hold on, Alpity.
He never had an ace.
He has more nuts than us, right? He's gonna have some aces. They shouldn't have some aces.
Well, not when he takes that. When he takes that turn line. His hands like ace, king and stuff are just not really in range anymore. Like, the only one that might take that, well, I don't even think like ace eight takes that.
And he's supposed to be blasting that turn, so if we're gonna say that he has ace king and you wanna go all in.
I think you're like, you're targeting bluff catchers now. Basically, so like.
Uh, the machine might still have some aces here, right?
Yeah, it could. Um, it's gonna be like weaker aces, though, is the thing.
I think our biggest bet's eighty-four percent here.
Why eighty-four? I I think you might over.
What would you do if we had, if we hit like a straight? Like, what are, like, cuz he, the machine's gonna check some aces all the time, right?
A straight.
Fifteen is good.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of in that neighborhood, too. I like one fifty. I think jamming may be too greedy. No, it goes a little bit smaller.
Yeah, he just.
Kansas savant.
In in our game, he just, in our games, they just never have an ace here.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to work through this two game, this little bit of two game shit I got in my head, which isn't much, and I didn't think we would get to jam versus that position who has all the better aces generally.
Call.
And he still has all the sets on that board, too. For four houses.
All right. First three is easy.
So like that hand might wanna do it, but none of the rest of our range doesn't want to, so we can't.
Already very interesting.
I would block here sometimes.
So always twenty, right?
Yeah, I would dunk, or I mean, I I don't. If I was dunking, I would use a smaller size.
I'm still primarily check, though.
Yeah, you could, you could probably check, but um.
And then five here, you guess your range is gonna do.
So. I think we use a more mergey bet if we dock here.
You might, Ken.
Nope.
Wow.
But still mostly check.
All right, let's check. Check.
Uh, how greedy are we going for value? Well, how many, is he checking backwards a sex here or better a sex?
I'm five or seven.
I'm checking.
Why you wanna check him?
It's very specific parts of the range, Danny, but yeah.
So he's, that five's better for our range, so he is gonna start checking some of his aces. Uh, for sure, I think, on the turn.
It's a rainbow five.
Especially, especially aces that don't need much protection.
Five big blind is more advised, no?
Yeah, mostly check. And then maybe, he's not gonna bluff the king. I doubt, but you never know.
All the, all the ace five, fold the ace six.
I like that, Scotty.
This can three better fold, or three better call, probably.
I like that, Ken.
I don't remember the last time I've treated that under the gun with ace five off.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta use your ace blocker sometimes. You're just always in spots like this. It's, it's hard.
Yeah.
Now you're, now you're playing, wow, he lets you off the hook. I like, why is he? So wait a second. Why did he check?
He's supposed to bet any two here.
Yeah, he.
What about, uh, what about like king, queen and stuff? He might check that some frequency. I mean, I, I agree with you, though, like, uh, ace, jack, deuce, two tone is effectively a range bet, I thought.
Yeah. So there.
I mean, they can even size up some, I think.
Yep, especially from under the gun, right? Like, late position can find more checks because they have more junk in their range.
Take that, all right? He really likes to check. I don't know.
He's got the nuts, man. He's got pocket aces.
I'm gonna make him do it.
When they check the flop in that position, that's the first thing I think. Like, he just flat to say, like, he's gotta say. He's gotta say jacks. I'm a fucking day long.
Yeah, look, now you see this. Yeah, yeah, same here, kid.
Will we call?
Uh, I think you do. Yeah, you gotta call. I mean, we're like way under a rep.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, uh-oh's right.
Uh-oh.
It's gonna get ugly, man. Maybe you block. I don't know, dude. I'm folding if he jams.
It's cuz Louis forced him to bet. He changed, he changed.
Go back into the one thing.
Why is he checking?
On that one, I wanna look at the, it, the, the range on the flop. Do we fold the ace six?
Never folding an ace.
The gun one. How bad is it?
Up pair.
How bad an ace do we fold?
Never.
Okay, we just play every ace against, against them.
Which is range, but which is range look like on the flop, too? Like, how many checks does he actually have?
Hey, he doesn't check this board.
He shouldn't, right?
Remember.
Think.
Remember, I have to do that.
Okay, he does, he does actually check quite a bit.
So yeah, kings, queens wanna check some. I thought they would, but. I guess, yeah, some of the worst aces, I guess, fine, whatever. But like in my games, I don't think anyone's betting an underpair. They, they see that flop and they put it on the pair and they bet praying we fold. Like, and I do the same thing. I ain't even gonna lie.
All right, wanna three bet or call?
Uh, jack, oh. Well.
High frequency three bet here.
Yeah.
Call against big size. Don't, don't raise.
Woo.
All right. Mostly don't raise.
Six on the turn. We don't leave.
Yeah, I don't see a reason, really. You still have a good hand.
Oh, we block both.
Here comes the thirty eights.
It's just a call. It sucks. We're just in, we're bluff catching now.
What's the call? Yeah, okay. Please don't jump.
I mean, at this point, when everything misses, then we have to check call.
Well, there's leads.
Wanna see the leads?
No, I said, oh, yeah, no, I don't care.
Okay. Let's play this thirty instead. Okay.
So I guess we only call this. You're gonna raise ace, jack, I guess. We have, we have ace queen, too, so probably raise ace, ace queen, ace jack, and then just probably. I mean, this might raise a some tiny portion, but I'll call.
Raise again.
Big bet.
Raised against this giant bet.
Hold on, I didn't see the bet size. You gotta call.
Yeah.
Oh, my god. Um, not too wrong.
Oh.
Uh.
A four pairs.
Yeah, but we don't defend our fours on this board, I don't think, honestly, so we.
You're right, but we gotta do something, no?
No, no, no. I don't think we have any fours versus that. I think our fours just fall on the flop. It's two broad, two broadways. We fold third pair, man, and it's a huge bet, so yeah.
Against a giant bet.
I can't believe we're leading. How many fours we got?
None. But the range is doing it anyway.
Ace four.
It's not only about the four. It's kind of the fact that it, we called an overbet and the four doesn't change anything.
So we have fours.
Advantage now.
The fours with a backdoor flush draw, I guess we called. Hearts and spades.
Hearts.
So we have a couple, we have a few fours, one, two, three, four, five. Got like six, seven fours, right? Like, uh, no one's believing that.
Okay. Ooh.
Did you lead?
No.
No. He's blasting us again.
We're facing some aggression here.
I'd be just jam, I guess.
Just fold.
How about calling?
Hey, fold. Look at the folds. Majority folds. Go.
I've hunted minus twelve big blinds per hunter.
Yeah. Okay.
Hundred percent.
You can't fold.
Woo.
It's like.
Well, you can.
Oh.
Hey, I was surprised.
What a surprise.
Absolutely shocking. You have a better ace from under the gun like this.
Blasted, blasted, blasted.
That jam, and we're out there calling, calling, calling with, with these deuce off. Let's go.
Call, you say three against the low jack.
All right. Oh, the thirty eight strikes.
Deck raise.
You wanna raise him?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, if the check raised some, let's check raise.
Yeah. All right, we all have this one. Four flush card. I think we bet small.
Yeah.
Bet half.
Bigger.
Oh, yeah, you're barren.
Gotta learn, you know why?
River jam, right?
And the equity can't turn or shift dramatically on the river. I think that might be why. Like, spade, we wanna, we, you know, we gotta get max value from a single spade.
You ship it?
Yeah.
No.
That king is good for his range.
No, I'm checking. Or not, I don't know. I was gonna say black bet. I changed my mind to last second.
It's not, it's not a check.
You can still get called by worse aces, so yeah. Thirty-five percent's good.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah. Uh, this probably mixes raises and calls.
Probably have to raise some here.
Yeah, I would think so.
Against the tiny bet, against button, yeah.
Uh-oh.
Call.
Three bets, that's okay.
Uh. Also, can I ask if we fucking dunk? Really, no, I'm.
Yeah, who would dunk? Cuz it didn't improve.
He can sit, we could, we can bet here and set a price.
Well, the thing is, he clicked us, right?
He did, and then he checked.
But then he chooses, then he chooses not to bet turn, so like.
Exactly, so that sounds pretty strong to me, cuz he's.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna.
It's condensed. It's more sort of, you know, middling. It's like something with, with value, but not that much value.
I don't think he can raise, I don't think he can hit the five hits the river.
Louis, why would you characterize it as strong?
Because he feels like he's giving us rope when he checks, because he clicks up, he clicks us on the.
Louis, Louis, you were playing with a solver. It doesn't feel and giving rope and that kinda stuff. Like, why would it? Why would it do it from a range perspective?
Listen, the machine has feelings, all right?
I wanna bet thirty, in game, I wanna bet thirty-six to, to pay up. I mean, I wanna bet eight point five.
And Scotty, what do you do when you get raised after eight point five?
Fold.
Yeah, I, I think we kinda box him up a little bit on the five, too. Like, obviously, this solver's always gonna have some raises, but I think they're gonna be more respectful.
Bet eight point five.
Is this the five, this is so much, it's so much better for us here.
Yes. You gotta block it. Okay.
Uh, see how often he raises versus that bet?
With queen, jack? Never?
No, his range.
It's that word, right?
Cuz I probably have a bad impression of what this solver's gonna do, but I, I feel like we box him up pretty good on the five.
Never raises.
It goes all in, right? What's it doing?
Just jams, slivers. Majority has a straight.
Oh, he's already got enough. He's got one combo, uh, one and a half calls and one jam, so.
He's taking other.
Jamming sets and straights at us.
Weird.
We fold the sets and straights.
So this will be a check raise. It's our best ace.
Preflop, did we ever rate, did we ever three bet this ace ten? I didn't see it. It flew by fast.
Twenty percent.
Thank you.
Check. Call.
Raise.
Called and raised.
Five pairs. We bet one? Oh, man. Let's go. Oh, the ten now. We go.
That big, I think, or at least pot.
How big?
I'll be.
So.
Pot or an overbet?
But yeah, one of the, one of the red ones.
So he's got, cutoff's got some, he's got ace five, king five, queen five, right? He doesn't have jack five, does he?
Yeah, but.
We go pot. I think we can go pot.
Does he just move call the, the turn with the five?
He's in position, yeah. I think we can go pot, though.
Well, it's like seven. You can bet big, like sixty percent, but. Oh, he found the mark no call.
We got him.
All right. Play the thirty eight. Ken wants to fold. Check, check, the seven.
Check.
Check.
We don't block?
No.
Why?
He can check a lot of aces, cuz he can check a lot of aces that are better than our ace there.
Flop goes check, check. I don't think he can check that many. He's supposed to bet a lot on mono tone. He's in position, still in a sideboard. In my mind, he was betting a lot here.
I bet he's checking forty percent.
He is with his end, but. A range?
I mean, the range. I didn't even see that.
Majority betting, betting sixty percent of the time.
Yep, but look at all those checks with aces.
Hmm, yeah.
And look at all better aces.
A weak ones, right? So he probably has a weak ace that is slightly better than us. So we don't bet on a seven.
Yeah, I'm trying to manage the pot here.
Yeah. Call.
The deuce. With the spade. Should we back here?
No.
Why not? If you block, you can get a better ace to fold, no?
Probably, cuz he should be betting his flushes on the turn and a little bit bigger.
Question, man, also like. Okay, well, turn didn't go check, check, so I guess we check again. Yeah.
Fold.
Yeah, I don't really see the. Yeah, that's how you were betting river.
What do we do against the box?
Fold.
Fold.
I'm folding.
Okay, do you have a nice here? Any aces in your range defending, or is it purely spades?
Well, I mean, look at. Two pairs better. It blocks more sets.
Ah, that's right.
That's don't go the size, but we have two pairs. We have some sets.
We have a lot of aces on the board. There, that's right.
Yeah, so like, there's, there's just better hands. Any single spade forces a flush.
So we can call two pair, you say, and then some spades?
I don't know. I mean, this sizing, the balance where he actually has, you know, um, value with buffs, maybe.
Okay, so this is a fold. And then.
It's close, though.
It's close, right?
Your intuition, yeah.
Oh, you gotta call with some aces. Ace three is calling. Ace seven is calling. That's two pair. Okay, so that's two pair, that's two pair, that's two pair. That's, oh, we don't have it, but. So two pairs. Bears, and then we have lots of spades.
Yeah, two pairs are thin calls, but they need call. Single, single pairs are like.
So we can raise the queen? But not the. Oh. All right. Matter mono. The nine pairs, are we gonna do something about it?
Nope, we're gonna check call.
Uh, we could probably lead.
Probably dunk here.
Yeah, he doesn't have all suit nine, so.
He should be betting almost hundred percent on that board.
Yeah, he's betting, he's betting a lot, too. He's betting, while he's betting like, I don't know, seventy percent?
Hmm, checking fifty fifty.
Oh.
And a lot of better aces.
So we can do something about it, like a little two or something? And calls? Flush completes again, we just check.
Uh, okay.
Yeah. King, jack off, all right.
All right. Yeah, he didn't turn his king into a bluff.
How often do you three bet here and how often do you call?
Uh, I three bet this one a lot.
I think we saw.
Reback, right?
Like twenty five. I don't think quite that much, but yeah, it's mixed in.
The six, ace six off plus is like, I like to bluff. Like the ace five.
What aces to a three bet, also ace three, ace two, ace three, or?
It mixes all the middling ones a lot, and then, of course, all the good ones.
Good ones, yeah.
As far as I remember, yeah, it just mixes them a lot. They're just shitty to play out of position.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, especially against cutoff and button.
Yeah.
No.
Raise is more than I thought. It must have something to do with the eight has redraws, maybe makes it really bump up the raise percentage here.
A spade.
Yeah.
And we've got three to straight, I guess, so we can pick up a lot of equity.
Yeah. And honestly, we don't have a lot of better aces either, so.
Yeah.
Uh, did we raise? You raised, right?
Raised. We raised. And after getting called, I think now we're going to check call mode.
I think we are checking, cuz we're not really raising nines on the flop, right? Or sixes. Block bet. Thirty, thirty-six percent.
All right.
Just always block that.
He's gonna call it like, uh, I was gonna say, he's gonna call it like pairs, like jacks and shit, you know? Uh, man, we're kinda fucked.
Yeah, this is like, unfortunately, a fold, yeah.
Old.
Unless he's a maniac, right? Like, he's player dependent, right?
He's a solver, so he has bluffs. Fold.
This is the dirty eights.
Yeah, I don't think we can fold, man.
So we're playing the late.
See the little brown button? You push it. You just, you just push that one. That's how you do it. I'm doing it right now.
So hold on, we gotta call how much? Twenty-five, doesn't like eighty. We only gotta win, like, we only gotta be right like a third of the time.
Yeah, and then we block the flush. And then we block, like, the eight is not good, though, right? Eight, seven?
Yeah, cuz we would be blocking.
Ten eight.
Yeah, some of those bluffs.
But the spade is great.
Yeah, he might do this. Can he do this with like, I don't know? Ten, seven of. I don't know, dude. I mean, I just, I like, gotta call a lot of stuff here.
Do this with a single nine. He can do this with, all he needs is, he doesn't even need an ace. He just needs a nine that he didn't, that he only called our bet with when the flush came in.
Does he even do this with an ace?
Fold.
Scotty, I know you wanna get out of here, but I don't think we can.
I think that we gotta call here.
Yeah, I think so.
It sucks, but.
Yeah, oh my goodness.
Forty-seven big lines.
Please show us what he has. Is he gonna show us what he has? Oh.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, we got.
No, we don't got him. He has a, he has a full house.
Oh, my goodness, Scotty. Yeah, we're right all along. Okay, Scotty, next time I'll listen to you.
This has, this. Hold on, hold on, go back to that. I wanna go back, go back to that river, and do we?
And.
How, are we overfolding a lot on that river, or do we have enough to make minimum defense? We're overfolding.
Got three combos here. So we're gonna check.
By the way, we, we folded this pre-flup sometimes, this ace three.
Of the time.
Yeah, I always fold it.
Right, but now we're calling.
But now?
Now that we're in, we're calling.
Now, 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 do we bet here?
Sure.
We could.
We could, but majority we don't.
We don't.
Now lead.
Now you gotta bet, right?
We can block that.
You're eat or not green?
Not greedy. It's more.
Really not greedy.
Really not greedy.
Oh, look at him. He folds. What a net.
Ball.
Never too bad.
Ever raise.
They're cold.
Check. One point two.
Ooh, do we wanna build a pot? Probably not.
We didn't have top bears would be a great one, right?
Ugh.
Oh, he's checking, so.
Keeps getting better and better.
Now check.
This is like, this is like a run out that makes me so annoyed when it happens in real life. I see the flop, I'm like, I wanna win a big pot, and it goes like this.
Then you don't, no, then you're like, oh.
I'm not winning nothing.
We could block here, but I don't want to.
Scotty, we gotta block.
We block it, yeah, cuz he just can't. If he raises us, we fold.
So four liner.
Yeah.
Do we get better ace to fold when we bet back? No, but we get called by king?
We, we split with better aces.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
Yeah, we split with ace nine.
I'm blocking here. Do we get, is it a value type of block? Like thirty-five percent here? We, we don't get a better ace to fold. We get kings to call, so it's value. All the kings are calling or raising.
Well, that king raise is dirty.
Call.
We bet so much.
Yeah, probably three bet.
Can only.
Oh, huge bet. Can't, can't raise.
Yes, we can.
Oh, we can. We can raise.
You wanna raise, get it in, I guess.
I'm there.
Uh, call.
Oh. So.
Folded real life.
Block straight. You got your, one of your best aces. I mean, you're fucked. Where's a brick?
Then there's a brick?
The river's a brick.
No, you cut out. We couldn't hear. The ten is good, I think.
Then it's good.
It blocks plus, but it blocks straights, too. It's like.
What blast does a ten block? What bluff does a ten block? Because when I see this ten, I'm.
Nine, ten?
Back ten, nine, ten? Is blasting bed bed jamming a nine?
No.
Um, maybe, yeah, probably, on this run out, I, I think so, I think so, we can look.
Fold in real life.
If you fold every time here, you're gonna get bullied.
Yep.
You gotta find some calls here.
Yep, in this.
Depends what real life you mean. Live, yeah, sure.
The ten blocks value, right? So it's nice to have a ten.
So an eight is not good here, so this is the bad blockers. Five, six, seven, eight, why is that? Five, six, seven, eight. Better to have ace deuce than ace five here. Well, not really, right? Look at the value. Ace, ace deuce with six, yeah.
He must be bluffing jack seven, jack six stuff.
He also went with a pretty big.
Heavy suit, there's some heavy suit interaction there too.
Oh, actually, yeah, I forgot about the flop over bet.
Oh.
He's definitely not doing that with nine, ten.
Got him.
So he, he went with the big bets with the eights and sevens. So he was really bluffing eight, six, seven, X, so that's why they say is the worst, followed by a seven. We can treat that a lot here.
Yeah, it's gonna mix. Oh. Why is, why is it fallout versus cutoff here, I wonder?
Yeah, look at the EV difference, it's small.
I think it's more like ace ten and ace eight. They say being the biggest one?
I don't know, I think it's still.
And he said the biggest one, they stand. And then this is just, it's gonna pick other nines.
Oh, it blocks the bottom too, right?
Yeah.
Must be why.
Ooh. Here comes the dirty ace.
Raise.
Why you wanna raise?
Well, if the, it's the one we call, so we had our best ones ace ten and ace nine, right? So let's go, it's dynamic board and raise like.
You wanna raise it.
Fifty-five percent, yeah, I see.
Boom. Yeah, makes sense.
Dynamic, so the, 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 the board's, when the board's gonna change a lot on the turn, you get to size up your check raises.
I think it's like you said, it's the two best that we call pre-fluff, so we gotta stop off the range, right?
Yeah, and then you use the larger size because it's a, uh, dynamic board.
And it's dynamic because you think this, because Broadway's bringing straights?
Well, there's a lot of cards that are gonna change the, it's gonna shift, there's a lot, a lot of cards are gonna shift the equity.
The ten, the jet, what, what, what am I missing? The ten, the jack?
Nine, ten, jack, king, um, even the seven some maybe.
Nine?
Not the nine, but.
Nine brings in ten jack.
Yeah, and even a queen is a dynamic, uh, turn.
Yeah, it's just a really dynamic board, so you get to size up, but if the equity is likely to shift on the turns when you size up your check raises, as far as I understand it.
Right. I just didn't, I know, I agree with you, I just didn't see this board as one where the equity was likely to change. But obviously I'm wrong.
Yeah, like I think, so there's, there's no flush draw on the flop, but, uh, the Broadway nature of this makes it much more dynamic.
Yeah.
So we check raise, we're gonna barrel?
Yeah, I don't think we can count the queen as a dynamic change. It does change it because that's true of any board, you know, any board that pairs, the nuts have changed. Well, I guess it's because more people are more likely to have the queen. Okay, good enough, moving on.
Oh. Feels bad.
Nothing you can do about it.
Feels bad.
Haven't lost enough money yet.
There's something you can do about it.
Check raising his large size a lot. A lot more than I thought.
Seems to be a little bit ambitious against the under the guns big deck, no? Is it just me or? Because when I check raise under the gun here. I feel like if, if he has ace king, he's putting it in my face every time.
That's the answer I wanna know. If we check raise and he jams, do we call?
Never.
Well, let's see. He might not even have a jam range, but that doesn't mean it isn't gonna happen.
Check raise thirty-three. He's putting it in with ace king, look at this.
And what do we do?
Just fold.
Yeah, so you gotta call ace six, Thornton. Because it has a straight redraw probably.
It's like ace eight.
That's with a spades.
God, that's a bet.
Ace six is spades, right?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Ace seven is spades, yeah.
Yeah.
But ace nine, ace nine has real.
Ace nine is just like that line here.
Hey Louis, do you have to set up like the king five, is this just spades or is this?
Just spades, yeah.
Okay, so you have it set up so it just shows full, the full box being greened out?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's really more just the suits is what I was looking at, okay.
But, but like you check right, we check raise on the flop, so majority of our range, then I have a lot of space here.
Yeah.
Alright, so we call this one. Six. Oh my goodness.
Now you got a lesson why you can just check raise and you lost less, because you check raise, he jams, we fold, and it's one of the next day, and now we gotta call down and lose all our chips.
Nice.
Block.
Is the ten, I think the ten kills the action for all of his better aces, does it?
Block.
We don't need to block because his action is that.
But if we don't block, see, the thing is, the solver, we prob, since we're probably doing this with our tens, the solver knows when we check, we don't have any tens. And now it's gonna go ham on us probably, right? Because it knows everything. Fold.
Fold.
I'm sorry, guys.
Uh, I'm saving my fifteen bags and moving on.
If we have.
At best, it's indifferent, right?
I think it's a fold.
Okay, you guys wanna fold?
I wanna fold.
Never.
That's not indifferent.
Yeah, I feel like I lost point oh seven lines there.
Yeah, yeah, it was. It's a lot.
Alright, so we can trade that up here, that's what we're gonna call. We're gonna make a dirty ace. That's pretty small.
Mostly call.
Do you have a raising range with your races here?
Sometimes, yeah, I'm gonna raise some, this will raise some, I think, probably ten, fifteen percent.
Do you wanna have a spade?
Yes, I wanna have two spades.
I don't think it matters.
Not. Do you want him to have the spades?
You don't wanna have a spade when you raise? There's a sliver of a raise.
You have to have a spade when you raise, you need the ace spades.
Yeah.
I, I find in these early streets, the, the solver prefers to have the spade. It not to overly account for the blocker, as you get later, it becomes the other way around.
Yeah, that's.
I guess that's true, yeah.
Good way to the chat.
Because on the flop, we're less worried about the blocker and more happy about our backdoor equity.
You're looking for the equity, right?
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, that's why, the way I see it.
That, yeah, I think that's a good heuristic.
Oh my goodness, he's boxing us up. I'm not ready to leave yet.
Close your eyes and then hope you all hear all in. Hope you hear him, don't say all in.
This, this one you can fold, this one you can fold.
Why?
Can you?
Because the flush, the, the, of all the ones that we didn't, the, the, the draw didn't brick off.
So you don't think he does this with queen jack off with a single spade?
I think he does.
And jack with a single spade?
I think he does do it with that. I also think he does it with all the spades.
Oh, which, which one is a better call here? Ace ten or ace seven? And then would we call with the seven of spade in our hand?
Ace seven is better called than ace ten and.
Yeah, yeah, ace seven's definitely better.
Well, so doesn't ace seven more on block the Broadway bluff?
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm thinking ace seven might be better than ace, uh.
Right.
I don't want an ace of spades here. I don't want an ace of spades, I think a seven of spades would be pretty irrelevant.
Would you, would you fold the ace of spade here?
I mean, I'd rather not have it because I think it's blocking a lot of bluffs.
Like.
There's no bluff because there's an ace on the board.
Yeah, so it's ace of spades has got you, has you beat a lot of the time.
Similar to J L's webinar this morning when we had the ace of the suit, right? Let's see. So first off, do we call or do we?
I'll call him.
Probably call.
Calling, next thing fifty.
Team fold, team fold, I only got one fold wrong.
And then a ten is better than a seven, look at this.
Okay.
I guess we were, if a ten were blocking its value.
Look at this.
No, it isn't blocking any value. Ten is blocking.
A bluff, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we, that's why we thought we wanted the ace ten, but in reality.
Yeah, that's right.
Again, here ace of spade is bad because he is bluffing the single ace of spade.
No, but it's a. That's what confused me, it's not a bluff. There's an ace on the board.
Ah.
It's a better ace than us. Ace of spades is good.
Okay, okay, okay.
Ace of spades blocks the spe, blocks the, the flush.
Yeah, okay, can't get behind that.
So, but when, when he's holding an ace or an ace of spades, how often does he take showdown? Isn't he, he's, how often does he take showdown instead of bluffing it? Or betting it, whatever you wanna call it?
When it's a low ace, maybe.
So the ace of spades can bet more, right? Because he feels better, it feels like he's got more value.
Solution is here, guys.
Oh, there, this is him, okay, I'm sorry.
Betting with the ace of spade, with the queen of spade. He is betting when he has his. He feels more confident when he blocks the flush. And that's why in return, if he ships it, and we have the ace of spade in our hand, looking at bluff catching, it's not great.
Hold on, go over those, it looked like, it looked like we were calling with ace of spades and folding.
Look at this here, Scotty.
That's the set. Yeah, those are folding.
And then look at these.
Right.
So the seven of spades calling, the ace of spade is folding, same pattern with the six.
Right, and we have to have the heart, that's what it is. For the ace of spades to call, we have to have the heart.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Not the ace, but not the ace six. Hold, hold on, wait a minute.
So general idea, it's thin, right? But I think having the ace of spade here is not great. You think it's great because you blocked enough flush? But in reality.
No, no, Louis, Louis, look, no, we're caught, no, it's the opposite. The ace of spade, okay, it's only the seven, go back, go to the ace six. And you'll see the ace of spade six calls and the ace of diamond, and the fold is the club dime, is the.
Losing EV.
But they do, but they do the call, it's, it's aces, it's specifically the ace seven has, has this freakishness to it.
Well, I'm under the impression like.
Yeah, because then he's more polar, he doesn't have the thin value as much, and we block the.
This ace of spade is mixing, right? But this six of spade is full frequency.
Right, now, 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 now look at the same thing, look at the same pattern in the seven?
Same thing here.
Seven, we never do it, and then, in the, and then the five mix is different. The five mix, all the ace of spades do it.
Yeah, but it's still the same idea.
It's thinner, having an ace of spades, it's a thinner call.
Okay.
Right, is that what I'm saying?
But in this case, you only call, you only call with, you only call full frequency with a spade, with the ace five combo.
Yeah.
Strangely. So I think you're, I think our, I think we're overvaluing our heuristic.
Possibly.
Yeah, but let's call this. And let's flop an ace.
And that's great.
Alright, let's check raise this.
Me?
Well.
He connects well with this board.
Do we touch up raise top two or top and bottom?
We, we do top two more than top and bottom, but we can, we still do top and bottom.
Against this size, we, yeah.
We gotta raise big against this size.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
We trap bottom. Cash game solver is flattening this a lot, but with this, my number blinds are.
Let's keep betting.
Hello, check.
Let's get all, let's get.
Wow, we wanna go small, go small, we still wanna build a pot a little bit bigger? Oh, it's going big.
Yeah, we need to get, we need to be all in on the river.
Not really that big.
I thought the full ha, I thought having a full house would make us go smaller, honestly.
Jam.
GG.
Jam, jam.
He's, he's got ace queen all day.
Jam, jam. We got big.
My games, they have ace queen.
We did more check raising against this big size than I thought, I still wanna call this one. But I'm just surprised at how often we did check raise.
Him bet on the jacket.
Yeah.
For our range, right? But I still wouldn't have found it.
When you set this up, did you also set it up to have the stupidest run out every time?
No.
Well, it's supposed to be hard.
Fold.
So we block.
You're gonna know what to do with your dirty eights.
I think we gotta call, man.
I don't know, can.
We gotta call thirteen and a half to win, what, forty-three, twenty-five percent or something?
I have two.
Yeah, but I mean, everything is.
We don't have two pair, Louis.
I'm folding this.
We have some jacks, we have some spades, we have some stuff we can call with here, we have straights, we don't need to call every top pair here.
No.
I think we have got a lot of better hats.
Yeah, most call anyway.
We dunk, we dunk some of that on the turn.
Yeah, we only had.
Some of that on the river.
We only gotta be right like one in four, right? So roughly.
Call.
I mean, real life, whatever, just fold, but.
Totally.
I saw the audience.
They checked?
Oh.
First one is easy.
Yep, first one's free.
Lead.
Lead twenty, twenty percent of the time?
So how did the board change that, that justifies changing your?
It's a low.
Five, five, six, we have seven, four, we have four, three. Okay. We picked up a bunch of pairs and straights here. We have five deuce, right?
Yeah.
We have, yeah, we got two pair combos.
Yeah, a bunch of two pairs and straights.
Yeah.
Five, six off, which he doesn't have, which is kind of important here.
Did we lead and he raised?
No, we checked and he bet, and he bet.
Yeah, I like this result a lot better.
Right.
We're gonna call against this, I don't think we really need to raise.
Okay. Oh.
Right.
See, now we're, now we're at his mercy to put a bet in.
Yeah, but he puts, but he puts bets in with buffs, which is awesome, otherwise we're just trying to get cool. Yeah, hoping for a blush here, right? And that's kind of a tight.
I think I got all those chips.
Terrible river.
The dirty ace strikes again. And I called the first one. Probably gotta call the second one, but.
Ow.
Yeah.
Feel like. Feel like we need to abort.
Gotta call it, because he gets to bully us on this board, man, I think he, he can't fold an ace, I don't think, I, I, I mean, I hate it, but I don't think we get to fold.
I bet that there's a slip, I bet the, the folds start coming in, I'm gonna guess. Fourteen percent folds.
Evacuate.
I think he's, I mean, I think this is mixing with a fold.
Yep.
Just like Scotty said, I mean.
What's the number, Josh? What's the number?
If it's.
More than fourteen percent.
Alright, you're gonna jeopardize even fifteen.
There you go, more than fourteen percent.
Fifty.
Fifty, fifty.
Yes, he gets the boys, so we can't do nothing about it.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes they just aren't in a better position.
Yeah, fold.
The dirty eight.
We have, we have king, jack, king, ten, queen, jack, queen, ten, that all would probably be better calls. And then we have jack ten off and full.
Now, I actually think this is, if it's mixing, it's mixing at the high percentage of folds here, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's a pure fold.
I mean, on the turn, I'm talking about, sorry.
No, I'm saying this time, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, if we fold half of it on a turn, your other hand's gonna fold now, right? Like, it's gotta be out.
I think it's a pure fold or close.
See, I think we fold the turn because whatever continues is gonna continue until the end.
I don't think so.
You always gotta shed some of your range, right?
Yeah, this is done.
Um, I mean, now, does this make a better call than, than the king, jack, king ten stuff that we have?
I think so. Like a ten and.
We don't have diamonds either, like, maybe it is just a call now.
I think so, honestly, I think it's a call. What are you gonna defend with if you don't call this? Feels bad, though, right?
The dirty ace.
That dirty ace, man, here we are. I mean, full turn and move on with your life, but if you're.
It goes unblock all the bluff.
Ah, I'm wrong.
Oh, just all turn, man, you had it.
Louis, you're the goat, man.
Because we have too much other stuff that calls turn.
You're not even, you're done on the turn, and it's pretty good. But against this guy, I just don't have any respect for him.
We have the nuts.
Yes, he had the nuts. He flopped the nuts.
Yeah, well, Louis correctly lost all of his money, I incorrectly didn't.
No, some of us folded the turn.
I know.
And correctly lost less. That wasn't wrong.
That's different, thirty ace.
Does that, what was it, what was the raise on that?
Thirty, twenty-nine, thirty, something like that.
All in. You look at him and you say, ah, I gotta ace deuce off, you got ace king, I'm done playing here, then you push.
I put you on ace king, but I think you're gonna fold, I, I don't think you wanna flip, so.
No, he gets, we get there, that's what that's for.
It's always a good strategy getting there.
Yeah, call.
First one is easy. Second one is, ah, not so easy.
Start folding and.
I mean, that's the line.
We have the ace of diamonds, so we block his, we block his contin.
Yeah.
His diamond continues, although they're aces anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, so I think.
Ace of diamonds.
It's irrelevant.
Diamond.
Or it's not very relevant.
I don't know if I can fold yet.
We fold ace of diamond only, we call every other one?
So, do we call the ace of diamonds because a diamond could slow him down on the river?
No, it's the other way around, I think it's bad to have it.
I think it's good.
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
I think. And we're gonna look.
Yeah, I think he will barrel less thinly on rivers when he doesn't have it, and the flush does come in.
It's just irrelevant.
Maybe that's a small point.
We just call every ace.
Likely better, no, it doesn't really matter.
So I like this river because I think a donk here is exciting, because, I mean, he doesn't have any queens at this point, right? Because he's checking back the queen on the.
But he, he could probably have a little by our the queen, like.
He overbets the turn, how are you gonna bet him?
He overbet flop, right? Or was it turn?
He bet.
He overbet the turn?
He, he bet small on the flop, and then he bet, um, like ninety percent, eighty percent on the turn.
One twenty-five percent.
Yes, he probably doesn't have many.
Got one twenty-five, I'm sorry.
So it's.
Like, what, what queen do we arrive here with? Maybe some boats?
Queen, they got the suited queens.
I think queens with a spade, well, I don't know, I don't. Yeah, queens with a spade, queens with a heart.
We have four houses, our queens mostly.
Think it's just a pure check.
Yeah, okay, what do I know?
Because if, if it goes check, check on the turn, you're right, but if he overbets the turn, you're not gonna leave the river all of a sudden, just because they're queen pairs. It was like a, a bottom card pairing of five or four, maybe?
Paul, never raise, never raise. Learn that.
Here comes the dirty ace, we call.
Call.
The turn, hmm, can we lead on this start?
Nah, I don't think so. Two's kinda bricky.
Four or five?
Be on the four, yeah, or, yeah.
Can you lead the six? Is it too far away from the three to lead?
I think you do it less, actually.
You have four, five.
I think a six would be better.
Probably can, yeah.
A four or.
I like a, a four or a six much better than a two.
From what it's first, though, under the gun, I'm still not leading an ace. And now you can bleed.
Eight?
Uh, do we get to go that big? I mean, we're, it's like we, I, like, we, I think our range is gonna split, I don't think this hand wants to go that big.
So he's stuck, we're trying to get value?
Yeah, that probably feels good, sixty percent.
No, no.
I like a bigger raise here, because, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, i- if he looks you up, you wanna get paid.
Yeah.
Like, his calls are pretty static.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We block the calls, I like the small size when we have the ace with, with the five.
Yeah, did he call us?
What's our blocker here? That we're blocking a call.
Oh.
Because we have an ace to go with our straight.
But aren't we unblocking, uh, so what are you targeting when you're betting small, and what are you targeting when you're betting big?
It wasn't really small, it was still over half pot, right? It's just little.
No, but the primary size was one-third.
Yeah.
You, when you bet third, queens will probably pay, um, when you bet big, you're just targeting an ace.
I, I just, I kinda think that there's so many aces in all these ranges that you can just target an ace with a bigger bet.
Well, all his aces are better than ours.
We did.
No, they're not, we, didn't we have a wheel?
We had a straight, Ken.
Yeah, we had the.
Wow, I didn't realize we had a straight.
Yeah, that's the whole point, is we had the nuts, and so we might as well try to get value with the nuts, and I can see a lot of aces calling.
Yeah.
And on that hand, though, didn't we, I mean, didn't we split all the way up to eighty?
Yeah.
We just didn't overbet the pot.
Pretty bad this old pick.
Can we go back and look and see if, you know, we were looking at that when the, when the, um, um, that turn card, whether the, the turn card that completed the middling straight, uh, played differently than the low card. So, n- let's keep that a, yeah, let's make that. Yeah, let's make that two of six or something.
Well, I'm gonna show you all the turns, how about that?
Oh, that's even better.
So we were guessing a four.
We were guessing a four or six, something that completes.
Surprisingly.
Five and six is not.
The report for our hand or for the whole range?
This is the big line for their whole range.
Heat map.
So it doesn't really make a, well, the, so the four bet, the four bets more.
It loves four, the three and the seven.
Yeah, four pairs always good, so that's the seven.
Yeah, so the four makes sense, I'm surprised the six isn't doing the same thing.
Why is the four so much better than the five?
Well, because you've got your, this, what I'm looking at is the straight gets completed with a four or a six, right?
A four brings two straights in, is that the difference? Uh, no, a five does that too, I don't know, sorry, go on.
Yeah.
Well, the seven is the best one. Seven pairing, that makes sense.
Yeah, oh, maybe it's because we don't pet, play the four-six.
Well, that's why I don't think a five does it, but I, I just am trying to figure out why this six is so much worse than a four, and I think the answer is, the four brings in two straights.
But we don't have five deuce off either, do we? I think we more have four-six if anything.
Yeah, I mean, more four-six should have been.
That's why I'm still unsure if that's for the ranger that, for our hand. But I trust you guys.
We could. Not today.
Check raise.
Today's the dirty ace.
Uh, hold on, no, no.
Yeah, I wanna check raise this, it's a, yeah, it's a smallish bet.
Wanna go big, yes, that big bet?
Yep, it's not big, though, it's half pot.
Small.
I can go big. Those two sizings are just so close, you're, there's not more explaining here.
There you go.
Oh, roll in. It's like ace queen.
Ace queen.
Very nice.
Music call. See, when he starts like that, already have a good idea, he's not gonna triple barrel off with big, he's not gonna box us up. So it's gonna be easy. Yeah. He never really did it. From that point, should we block here? Turn one, check, check.
Go for more value.
So we block?
Eighty-two percent.
You think it's that big? Yeah, I think between five and seven makes sense. It's even bigger.
Wha, why are you going so big with a single pair?
He kinda capped when he checks back turn.
Yeah, he never really has an ace, because his aces are gonna wanna protection and value against the flush draws and the straight draws.
Well, so, go, going back to what we were talking about, aren't you trying to get some sort of value from a queen then? And isn't the smaller bet gonna do that?
Yeah.
I have a feeling, I have a feeling queens are gonna, well, I don't know if queen's gonna call an overbet, that's a big bet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, isn't a small bet, I'm looking at the answer, obviously, but isn't a small bet better because you, eh, when you rule out the ace or minimize it, you now have to target a clean?
Well.
And.
Tell you what, John.
So, here's how I think it works, honestly, so we have, we're thinking, we have to think about our whole range, and we're gonna try to maximize value for your entire range when you're choosing bet sizes, and it's hard to figure out exactly what hands wanna bet what size. To maximize the value of the entire range, right? That's, that's kinda why these toy games are cool, which I really, really wanna get into more. But I actually just asked Prodigy Coachin to do some shit on it, hopefully they will.
Here's another reason, this is the, uh, Nick reason, since he's not here, I'll say it. What size?
Is that against the big raise side of Louis?
Huh?
Is that against the big raise? Is he responding to a big raise?
Yeah, it's the exact size over bet.
Alright, well, I guess I'm wrong, I mean, I guess the solver calls it with the big sizing. But I think, I mean, again, we always do this live.
But in, in game, is, is your opponent actually gonna call to a queen eight or something, right?
I think you gotta size down live, but I, I guess it certainly shows that he calls with the bigger bet here.
If you, if you size down, though, you have no bluffs, that's the problem, because you want, you wanna, you wanna match your value hands with your misflush draws, so that's why you wanna bet an amount that makes the queen, his weaker ace X and the queen indifferent.
I think, don't I have a lot of bricked spades that I could size down with?
Yeah, but he's never, if you, if you bet, if you bet thirty-three percent with jack ten of spades, he's just snapping you off with the queen, like, the queen's gonna call a hundred percent of the time.
That's right, so you wanna size up with spades, that makes sense. The kings, or the kings. Ah, we can fold here, right?
Yep. Now, hold on once, okay, one. After we check. I wanna take one second, look, against his small bet size, when we check raise, I was looking at what the big and the small was, so the small is about three times his bet, just a little bit more, and the big is five times his bet. Okay.
So I always say the check raises on this texture would be probably mostly small. I'm not saying to check raises hand, I'm just saying, I'm thinking that, I think we'll have mostly smaller check raises when we do here.
I, I, no, I think we're gonna have bigger check raises because of, because of this, because of the board suited. Now, let's see.
Yeah, so if it was like eight, nine, ten, uh, it would probably be bigger.
Because that would be suited, that would be suited and dynamic.
Connected, right?
Despite the flush draw.
Yeah, this, this board is dry, dry and, and two-tone.
So now, yeah, you see, the more din, the more dynamic it gets, the more you, uh, size up.
Dunk.
There's some dunking.
Okay, hope for a king or something. Check.
You can hope for a.
So when we take this line, we lack, when, when we take this line, we're gonna lack three, so we're gonna be calling more of our ace X. Winning jams? Oh, you docked, was that a thing on the river?
Yeah, it was a.
Call.[1720.44]